Okay, so. I like it. So, you should be getting signed in. Who said that? Wow! Wow! No, no, no. They don't bring the stuff. They just get the stuff. Get signed up. Oh, yeah.
Did I say his name right? How are we going?
Um, what?
Is that your name right?
Yeah, what is? You wanted to get me from that there? Um, yeah, yes. Okay, here we. If y'all want to keep me here a long time. They all nice. All right. You took me under the bus, you said I didn't know that. This was my first time coming. All right, you go to the bus. All right, you had to switch them with him. All right, you had to switch them. How you take the picture? Uh, you should not buy from them.
This is the politics, man.
You said.
I'm just saying, ladies and gals, I'm just saying, this one got the search, but if he was like, you got anything on this sound?
Rock the city, son, because you wanted to get frisked. You see how I held and sold me out for some candy? He's on canvas, he gonna say, I don't know Paul Benicord, he don't know. I guess that she just think I just popped up down here, how you doing? I love you guys, Robert Woods and Order Book. They brought them moves today, shit. Boy, I tell, oh, we live by the way, but I'm just frustrated that. Yeah. I told Paul, I said, I told him, I said, hey man, go get a, I said, go get, I told her, go get Paul. I only got ten dozen moves I'm trying to get down here, this should be quick. Let's see, let's see Paul bought all the good. But I ain't got no, Paul ain't bringing his extension. Let's zoom, let's try right now. I'll get you. I'm only a year off, so. I said I'm only a year off. But I own. It's Paul's pay for. Everybody else got a little notice. Yeah, you can do it, yeah, tell them, listen, it's not like I'll go. Ah, no problem, sir, no problem.
Yeah, I'll run the camera while you go, Mickey, I got this. Yeah. I got this. I miss Jared. I'm recording, because Mickey down over here. It's just amazing, Michelle. How you doing? I met you at Tanya's.
Oh, yeah, you want to speak to me? I need to get right here by the camera. You didn't touch me. Try to get this camera together.
Look, they know where I'm from there. He keep yelling, see me all day, when you see, you right, you right, you right. You know, when in my purse, I was like, wait a minute, you, you, I opened my purse, you opened my purse.
I'm just glad I met you, though, I'm gonna tell you, y'all six were ready, that was hell over there. Six, you know, y'all done been around.
Mickey downstairs.
Because y'all didn't want to speak when I was opening the house before, it don't work. You right, y'all look sad, I'm just. I'm messing with you.
Uh-uh, you know, we wasn't, we wasn't pushing them down, we like, what's up?
Yeah, I know. I seen y'all over there, I seen how y'all. Y'all invited you.
You should have came to our council, man, you should have started fire, I'd be like, man.
Oh, when, oh, San Jose's there?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I did, I wanted to, but I didn't get invited. There's somebody here with my wife, that's all I saw. Yeah.
I was like, you supposed to be experienced, you, you got this many years experience in green, you got how many years? And y'all can't figure out how to get these people for something? You know, last year, whoever was here, he went, he went up in the air. And knocked one of them electric, we had no lights for all night, sunset, sunset go out. He went up in the air, that's, that's why we.
Cause they broke that pole.
Yes, he went up in the air. I just wait, last year, somebody went down, because you know, I was right there on that corner. And I heard somebody, doo 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 doo. They almost to the roof. I said, it's just a matter of time before somebody be in there. He was all the way down, they had to get him right before the river. No, even when they passed. Oh, they already, they say we talked about. Traffic engineers, I'm saying.
They did a study.
Yeah. It looks like they still.
Nah, they ain't come, they gonna get going about five thirty. They get going about five.
I would have had a vacation, they better get, they better get the game.
It's only two here, oh, yeah, right, right, right. It's only five minutes, oh, I was saying, they're coming in. Yeah, they're coming in. And the councilman from the eighth ward. Pfeiffer. He's on there. Yeah, I got you, Dennis. Dennis Pfeiffer, uh, we got good, Dennis Pfeiffer then came on in, as you see. Y'all be killing me with that.
You gotta come down here looking rough.
I do be coming down looking rough, I be coming down. I be coming down like my father, I be basic, I be basic, I be taking up the town. Imagine, you see, I got all of this, you are, y'all don't know if I'm El Chico or. I mean, you know what I'm saying, I couldn't differ, when I let my hair grow out, they showed me that, uh, that, that I'm, I might be El Chico.
Hey, your butt don't hurt.
You ain't on the camera, man. Uh, you thought I had you on the camera?
Well, I was gonna post for it.
Oh, you was?
You better.
Look at him. Yeah, he started coming over here messing with eighteen, they gonna bang you.
That ain't the same suit you had on in the conference room.
I didn't say, he like, he like, watch him make ready sounds.
I was gonna say, sometimes you say you got a three piece on.
Y'all know they messing up.
I'm waiting for Tanya to come.
Yeah, now y'all stop with this madness, y'all gotta survive, a lot of heat now. I'll take it easy, y'all take it, we live, you take it easy. I can't see, I can't, I can't throw shade, I be trying to be.
You do, you are.
Yeah, I do. Cause she, she was side checking, I was trying to keep real. Yeah, I was trying to.
I'm trying to get rid of them, and I, um, I need to, it's all being on bias, it's all trying to.
And I thought I was hearing this, but he took himself hard, man. Or the one that put a clown on my face when he was up there. He found a deep grave. He shot me down, I ain't never been this hurt like this, I said. And I think it was unbecoming. I thought we was better than that.
All that Hollywood stuff up here, that is not.
If you go down, AC, ain't nothing I could do.
I'm going with one Jewish lawyers, because they mad anymore.
You can't, you can't say that, oh, mom.
What is he calling it, Mr. Doos, what's going on? Man, you the hottest man right now on the internet, man, you been, you been, your name is ringing bells, I didn't know, he ain't explaining to me why the man, hey!
She said she waiting to come, she waiting to.
I want her to come back home, let me go over there and talk to this man damn early. Oh, here she go, hold on.
Oh, he lost. She, she misrep, she, she misrep, she misrep.
Oh, shoot. We're gonna keep eating, my bitch. Please share the, please share the stream, everybody. We don't have, everybody's not here yet. Y'all do got two city attorneys here. Got them people over there. Let me see, we got one, two, three, four, five, young, wait a minute, Mickey, hold on, the people want the singles up. We got five, five council people that are here, the meeting was supposed to start at four forty-five, so don't worry about it, it'll start about five twenty. The four forty-five meeting. Mickey, you know what, I don't have time for you, I don't have time for you today, I'm all about peace right now, I need peace in my life. Mickey don't need no more friends. Well, he ain't got no more, so he been cool with me.
This is what I want to ask. I gotta ask you something.
What?
You don't care. Nah, cause the camera right there.
Mickey, I'm trying, oh, no, that's fine.
As you told me, that's terrible. Anything, you don't understand.
This four vote is five to tie, and we get started with this four forty-five meeting.
I know that's right, Uncle AC. I know that's right, Uncle AC. Uncle AC said.
Yeah, you got, she, she would make five, if they walking out. So, when they get ready, y'all walk out.
Oh, uh-oh, Mickey, I messed up something, Mickey, I messed up, I didn't mean to do that, Mickey.
Four forty-five, I can't breathe.
I know I can breathe.
They got all the votes here, man.
Y'all just wait, we wait.
Put AC out.
They can't put, they couldn't, they can't.
You see that?
Oh, no, Mr. Nightcap, they can't go with AC, don't put Uncle AC out, they could see why they end up with AC. And AARP.
They got the, they kind of good, we provide and walk up, how many motherfuckers is that, oh, this from the treasurer, this is really, they waiting for the treasurer people. I said, they said, they finna talk, that's the thing, that's right before council. That's right before council. So, you didn't read the agenda, I see. I'm the only one take care of the agenda, I think, man, this is crazy. Cause I'm, I'm happy with that. No, the meeting ain't started yet, I think we like thirty minutes behind. Talking to the people, something, I don't know. Okay, we got six now, Mr. E. Briner, he came on, he come on, on Tanya, Tanya coming on down. We got three, Chris here. The whole guy, we just waiting on Quincy, Quincy Leonard, but I believe he gonna be there, because he was at the press conference. My boy, I'ma play for your people. I don't want to go, I don't want to do nothing. He say anything, that dude, there. Why he making, I, I gotta post, I wanna put, put in politics. I know they don't, but I'm wondering what all them little forty dollars is coming for now. I wanted, I'm just saying, man. I wanted, I'm just saying, man. I done been, I done been blasted. He even put a post up in there, I got one for him, it's war. Nah, it's all good though, but, you know, I understand what liquor duty. Yes, ma'am. I just got. You got another, there's two meetings going on, I ain't, I thought it was just one. Which one you got, I just got the, uh, I got the meeting, I got the meeting, the final. I ain't know they had two.
The time is now five zero three, and the special city council meeting is now being brought to order. Roll call, Mattler.
Mr. Mays. Ms. Lewis.
Present.
Officer Lafferty, Diane, Ms. Priestley.
Present.
Inspector Fur, Diane.
Fur.
Shay.
Fur.
Mr. Piper. Ms. Worthing. We have seven members present.
We have seven, we have several. Seven, we have seven members present. Now it's time for the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Mays, would you leave the pledge of allegiance?
I would represent.
Ms. Worthing, would you put this in the pledge of allegiance?
This is my fucking, man, he baby.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Let's go. Liberty and justice.
So before we have our prayer or blessing, who wants to take the time to acknowledge anyone that has passed away? Do we have anyone who can acknowledge all of the time? Alright, so. Do we have one time this time? Alright, so now it's time for the prayer of the blessing. Ms. Priestley, would you please, would you pray?
And my father, we thank you for bringing us together, and Lord help us to work together. Soften our hearts and our minds. And Lord bless the city as we go forward to do this business. Lord, one has been in your hands for a long time, continue holding it close to you, and you worship it.
Alright, the reading of the parole of persons to the subsection, any person that persists disrupting the meeting in violation of the class and code, subsection thirty-one ten, disorderly conduct, soft and battery, and disorderly persons, and will be sentenced to arrest for a year's tenure. Any person who progress to peaceful and orderly conduct in any meeting, I begin with one warning, if they persist in disrupting the meeting, then it will be sentenced to arrest. Violate this shell and remove from the unit. Alright, so now we have a special order.
What order now, Jim?
What's your point?
Um, above, underneath council rules, that was voted on, and that's a minimum special order is at the end of the meeting.
Okay. Okay, so this is a special meeting, so we, we have to front that to the clerk, county clerk?
County Jim.
Mr. Mays.
Yeah, two things. One, we just went through this one, I was trying to change the agenda, change the draft rule, and certain way. Two, we got a committee meeting starting at five o'clock, this was poorly scheduled, and so, I'm ready to go to committee meeting that obviously can be done in the late.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mays.
I move to a chair.
There is a motion to, yeah.
I second that.
It has been, um, taken by Ms. Burns. Roll call, Mattler.
Ms. Mays.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy, Diane. Ms. Priestley?
No.
Carter, Diane. Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Jeff?
No.
Mr. Piper? Ms. Worthing?
No.
The vote is three yes, four no?
The vote is three yes, four no, just that motion fails. Okay, so for the record, um, Mattler, could you please answer my question?
The council rules, order of business and the agendas, order of business meets to regular means of council, the rules do not address special means of council.
Okay, thank you. Alright, so now we can go ahead and go on to the special order. And it is from the income tax administration.
Good evening, I'm the council, uh, Mattler, President, uh, thank you, I'm Kevin Smith, I am Deputy State Treasurer for the state of Michigan. Uh, and at council administration request, I'd like to present to you, uh, information related to, uh, proposal that we offered to the city to assist with the administration of income tax collections. Highlighted program, uh, for the city of Detroit starting in two thousand and fifteen, in which the state of Michigan, uh, utilized this infrastructure to, uh, collect and simply convert their collection practices to digital platform to use for state income tax collections.
Could you speak into your mic?
Yes, ma'am. What I need you to have for consideration in your finance committee, uh, packet, we have a memorandum or a standing, uh, for the city to consider, uh, to offer a team conversation with the administration for the purpose of every member's program. I can give, I can ask some questions at this time, or, um, I have some questions I need to deal with. Uh, so, I don't have any, um, complete information to share in terms of the amount of, uh, money that we generate from our support, but I can give you as an example, uh, what happened from the city of Detroit, so in two thousand and fifteen, the board took over, uh, responsibility for administering, uh, the collection process. The city was generating about two hundred and sixty-three million, uh, as of this year in June twenty twenty-two. As part of the program, we were generating three hundred eighty million for the city of Detroit, so it was an increase of approximately a hundred and twenty million, forty-four percent increase in efficiency. Can everyone still hear me? In addition to that, uh, if, uh, councils, uh, you may be familiar that the, uh, House Bill five seven was recently passed and authorized additional powers to, uh, the state mission in terms of collecting, uh, and levying, uh, fees to collect taxes, uh, for individual income taxes, so that also empowers us to be more efficient in doing that, and so what we're trying to do is we expand and out to multiple cities, uh, to assist in generating more revenues for, for, uh, city collection purposes. City of Flint just happened to be obviously a priority for the state of Michigan, uh, Detroit, it's obviously the largest city, but, uh, if, uh, council was extending, we had less to do, uh, we would opportunity to provide the same, similar benefits to the city of Flint. With that, I'll take a lot of questions from council.
Mattler, Jim, okay.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes, um, do you know how much income tax increased for two thousand and sixteen over two thousand and fifteen in Detroit?
Yeah, I don't, I can get that to you, I don't have the, the background of years, uh, I just can't compare to what's happening now, or to where, where they were before we got started.
Okay, I have a couple other questions, um, number one, I am paying the tax preparer. So, I, I do understand that a lot of residents who work outside the city are not paying their taxes, from my own experience, from my own clients, um, and I'm a, so. And I also know, because I work for a major software company that provides income tax preparation, um, software, that they only allow Detroit to be filed electronically, and this is a major company, this is a major program, um, because we are in, we would enact with you, or, or not enact, um, but become, give MOU with the state to do that collection. Do you know if that would facilitate those pro, I know programmates professionally allows me to file electronically.
Yes.
But not the one that I work for?
Sure has to, the question is yes, because they usually invested a significant amount of resources into developing how that infrastructure for Detroit, and so what we wanted to do is start to expand the existing platform to add on, uh, new cities across the state.
Okay, that's great, because I think that would really increase our collection, thank you very much, those were my questions.
Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Jeff?
Thank you, Ms. Jeff, you're the speaker. Uh, and the state would collect a, um, percentage of that, correct?
Yeah, so right now you currently pay, uh, a third party private firm, uh, in innovative services to collect innovative solutions, uh, you pay them a fee. Uh, what we're proposing is that, uh, the state would be paid, obviously less than what it's costing you for the third party now, uh, but you pay out percentages of, yes, the collections. Now, for the first year, what the, uh, Michigan legislature has appropriated and the government has authorized is that the state of Michigan will pick up the cost for that first year of the municipal tax, just to transition the guys into the program, and then going forward, the following year, it will be a percentage of, a total, a percentage of the collection.
Right, and how long would that be, how long is the MOU for, and then when you say a percentage, can you tell me be percentage?
Yeah, so, uh, I can't tell you exact percentage, but again, that's up to negotiation, so that will be contained in the final year. And, uh, the years, that similar conversation, we have to negotiate the years, uh, we're kind of in this, right? So we don't want it to be more than eight years, but, uh, that's sort of what we're thinking. But if the city wants something different, obviously we could. We would, I would propose that we would need to at least be five, because when you invest amount of money as you do in, uh, a type of data system, obviously you don't wanna put billions of dollars and then have a one-year deal, so, uh, I guess it's one.
Right, and I know that, um, again, this is A that making sure that we are actually capturing all of the, uh, taxes that should be coming to the city. So can you explain, um, what would be the difference in you taking it over and how you can ensure that you will get those taxes? Cause I'm assuming it's going to be different from when, when, so if you file right now, they'll ask you, you know, hey, you, you have the city tax, you wanna pay it now, or you wanna mail it in, or how are you gonna pay it? So what would be the difference in how you collect specifically for the city to ensure that that tax is captured once they file federal and state taxes?
Oh, that's a great question, Detroit asks the same thing, so one of the advantages that we have is that people, uh, file and pay their state income taxes, and a lot of folks who pay the state income taxes don't necessarily claim or file or hit them, uh, personal income taxes to the city. And so because we have access to those, uh, records, we're able to, uh, identify an additional taxpayers of the city, may or may not identify as one. So that's number one. The second thing is we also can attach and garnish, um, returns, so if folks are expecting, um, income tax returns from the state, or they haven't filed or they owe money on the city taxes, we're able to get that money that's owed to the city, and we'll deduct that from the amount that gets in the returns. So that's how we essentially have to increase, uh, revenues for the city of Detroit.
Okay, and before, um, before they are garnished, will they get a letter, kind of, a letter warning them that, hey, either this is what we assess that you owe Mercy, uh, or this city, because a lot of people don't live here, but this is what we assess that you owe the city of Flint, um, you have X amount of time to pay it, and, and if not, then the garnishment will start.
Yes, ma'am, they get the same letters that they would get, you know, if they owe money on their state income taxes, they get a letter, getting to know this. And of course, people that work out, you know, paid plans, other things, but we get the same treatment that they get for your federal and state tax, income taxes. It would just, so what happens is the letter that they receive from the city, it would have, it would come the same, it would come in an envelope from public treasury, whether we have the public treasury cash, city of Flint.
Who says it for now?
Okay, anyone else?
Mattler, Jeff.
Ms. Burns?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Smith, I'm gonna need that, and maybe I'm just surprised, I don't question you don't have yet. You just don't have presentation or any literature you can get to us?
So, no, again, the purpose is to get this, is to present this to you early, so right now we just passing permission for a MOU, so an extra MOU, so we can start developing, I'll be informed in detail. Obviously, once that's done, we have to present that to you before.
Well, I'm quite sure you know the statistics that play, and then, is it the poor city in Michigan?
Yes, ma'am.
Is it the poor city in Michigan, and that people don't pay the tax because they're poor? And so that makes a big difference, so, or you see that this agency would act as a collection agency to make, make sure, it's, help me.
Yeah, so it's not an agency?
Cause I heard, I heard what A, the state would do.
State, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so the state would garnish residents who are already facing hardship, they would pull those, those taxes for the city.
Well, I don't think we start with the concept of the intent to garnish, I think what the city's asking is, if people don't pay, what are the tools that are available to us, and what I'm saying is, you have the same tools that are available to us, that will be able to stay and to that ones.
Right, but that is the outcome, I mean, if, if we have to, that's kinda like the end of the road part, that, that's, that's in the equation. Is it possible for you to give us some information on it, um, because it's really all we have, it's just, you'll be here. I mean, it's on our agenda, and we can get something so that we can read, I'm like reading, um, so that we can, we can, people are gonna have questions. I've been giving you any answer, other than, you know, to further to, to watch what you said, um, to watch, to, you know, listen to what you are coming to say, that, I say, I appreciate your coming, uh, I wish it was accompanied with some type of information or literature that even, um, residents will know. Mr. Moore, I see you.
Yeah, you want to, you, you were more of a. That they, the detailed information is in your packet.
Okay. Uh, um, so, now, not, I'm, I'm not seeing it, it's, yeah, it's, yeah, I think it was, uh, Ms. Shaq, Ms. Shaq. It's not an, I, so that's why I was saying, you know, we, we don't have it, Mr. Moore, but if you can email, that's perfectly fine.
I think you'll find it in the, in the packet.
Okay. Okay, um, that would be mine. Oh, it's, I just got, I just got my laptop back to working, so I'm, I'm looking up, um, house number seven, what just said, and mine is literally just working. So I, I will, um, I will do that, um, thank you for, you said you're the deputy?
Deputy State Treasurer.
Deputy, Deputy State Treasurer, Kevin Smith, because it was a little difficult to hear, um, some of us talk loud, but it was, it was a little difficult hearing your voice, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, so, seeing that we have no more, um, questions we have to the body, um, are you, did you complete the present?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, thank you, so. Alright, so seeing that that special order is now voted. Now it's time for other speaking. So, so council, please stand at ease, because it's like, rise.
Did you see that? That air, yeah, when we had the trash?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Shaq.
Is everybody y'all waiting?
Yeah, so we were waiting for Madam Clerk to return. So I asked the body to stand at ease.
I ain't wondering. He said he talking to the P-Pod generation. The P-Pod. Who, uh, who's he was talking to? He did a T-Pod, did a, did a. Yeah, there's something else.
All right, so now it is time for, um, other speakers. Madam Clerk, who's that for a couple of people?
Our speaker is Paris Mitchell.
Hello, Council. I'm Ariel Mitchell. Living 759 East Clinton Street Avenue. And, uh, but, do you, Madam Chair? Do, do, uh, give Ms. Worley the schoolteacher? Because you called this special, uh, council meeting. Because, and you introduced us to this, what, major, this, this dude talking about he the, uh, the treasurer of, uh, anyway, I'm talking about generations, generational houses, over on South Side, all over Flint, that the schoolteacher quit my daddy's house on the market, and then my little sister had to come and take it off the market, like, like we don't, like, he didn't pay his income taxes. Or, and, but, I want you to know she, she got, she in the house right now, she had to come back from Georgia to get in the house to keep you from, from, uh, doing this, what you're doing now, like that, it's like Madame Jones over there. Like we, like the food bank. We have a permanent food bank for life over there. And, and we want the people on the first board to get generational houses. Not just the, uh, you won't give us money for the roofs. And you, anyway, what I'm trying to say, I was in a generational situation. From going over to Burton, I built a church out there, a church of God and Christ, and we're going to build some generational houses out there, but I wouldn't be in a generational apartment in the mayor of the city, happening, to call my, my folks to talk. And maybe, she was an eastern side white woman, whatever they had, and told me, hey, what I'm trying to say, you calling these special meetings and you act like everybody's missing on pay their taxes, like, once you jump on General Motors, ain't say a change, one bit, and all that stuff, nigga, but, he didn't do a job over there, for the, in the finished half of the building over there, my Murphy over there. We gave him a lot more stuff. Gave him a, a nine dollars, dollar, lot more than winning. And once you ask the public, the peoples, do they want a job? And I'd be the first one to ask, and I'd be second. Because you ain't, because Murphy get away that cool, even the peoples can get away that cool with it. Anyway, we want generational houses, like Mayor Stanley, the late Mayor Stanley did. He was the, he was going to tell the whole Flint and feel everybody brand-new generational houses, not no generational apartments. Paying sixteen hundred a month over there on Grand Travis, that little bitty place and all that. All you had to do, fucking after them tariff people, someone just go to fire, blow it up the hole, and then, and all, what?
That's your time.
My, that's a good idea. Thank you, Summer. And I got to say, Southwest High School.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
That's your time.
Keep hot that.
Next, other speaker, my pleasure.
Take time.
And I see there's Harold Skyler.
Good evening. I'm here as a supporter of RL Jones, uh, Community Outreach Center. I invite you to tomorrow morning to come to North Door Highway, where Greater Holy Temple is located, where the RL Jones DOC is. And to see the number of cars will be lined up on North Door Highway, waiting to, uh, get food, uh, distribution at RL Jones. It's, it's the most amazing thing that we, a lot of us take this for granted, the food, but as far as the number of people that receive their, their food, it's unbelievable. And in addition, for those who don't have transportation, then it's delivered to them. Uh, RL Jones also provides, they do transport the food to hundreds of people uh, within, uh, within Tennessee counties that don't have the transportation. But it's an amazing thing to see how far a door highway is lined up with cars on a Thursday morning, uh, people who are the recipients of, uh, of the food. And, um, the, the, uh, thing that we don't realize too is that we're, does, uh, RL, RL Jones or Asbury, uh, of the distributed, distribution centers, uh, get their food. It's not provided, or much, some of it is, yes, but also it costs money for them to purchase the food from the food bank. The food bank is not free. The federal, the federal food, yes, but the foods that, and many of us donate to the food bank, uh, the foods that they, that they secure, uh, the places have to purchase that from, uh, from the food bank. So it's a misnomer that, uh, that the food is provided free from the food bank. It's not, some of it is, like, if it's federal food, yes, but others, no. They, so it's, it's a lot of money that, uh, places like, uh, like RL Jones, like St. Luke's, like, uh, outreachies, they have to pay for that. Now, something I just want to point out to you is that, um, I, I am, I'm white, I'm white, I'm Jewish, and I probably bring that out to the fact that hunger does not know race, does not know religion. It affects everyone at all walks of life. And that's the thing where you as council members, uh, that the food, the, the proposal that's going to be coming before you to, for the hundred thousand dollars to RL Jones, I, I strongly encourage you to support that.
Yeah.
And, um, can I point, make one other point of information? And what the, and, oh, this is for, believe me, it's pretty entire city.
Unfortunately, cannot.
I know this is a point of information, which, that there are free, I want to point out to you that also I'm a communist, and I have a free eye clinic at St. Luke's New Life Centers. And it's provided for anybody who's under, uh, underserved, who, uh, needs, uh, eye care, who can't afford it. It's provided free at St. Luke's New Life Centers.
And thank you, sir.
I'm sorry.
Your time is up.
Okay, I just want to bring a point of information.
Thank you, sir, please have a seat. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Terry Kinsey. Terry Kinsey. Terry or Kinsey?
Hello, my name is Terry Kinsey. I'm speaking on behalf of Asbury CDC, I'm the current director of operations there. Starting, uh, team, great, uh, at Asbury, we're committed to driving positive change by creating and enhancing programs and introducing a host of innovative services that contribute to the equalization and betterment of people in Flint's underserved, uh, population and neighborhoods. We are one of the distribution centers in the city, as many of you know, on the Flint's east side, but we also are over on the Southwest who pigeon, so we give our lunches on a daily basis, and well, as food and direction of medical services as well. Uh, we've proven ourselves to be, uh, since, what, twenty twelve, to the, uh, vital, um, distribution center and community center for the people of Donnersherd communities in Flint. Uh, we've been working with Catholic, uh, charities and the Flint Eastern Land Bank, I mean, I'm sorry, Food Bank, in delivering a lot of our food and services. But, uh, like five years ago, we started an urban farm, um, using organic practices to add more nutrition into our meals. And, uh, we also have been able to expand into youth employment and workforce training, where we have summer youth, uh, come out to our farm, work at our farm, um, and learn, you know, seed the table and the importance of supporting, uh, the local food system. Uh, because that's where the freshest, most nutritious, uh, food can come from, is in a local, closer vicinity. Uh, we learned that the best way to mitigate lead in the system is through nutrient, and, um, plants incorporated in the diet. So that's something that everybody in Flint should know, everybody in Flint should, uh, start a garden for that reason. We also have expanded into, uh, youth training through programming processes and culture, teaching you culturally relevant, um, ways to cook and prepare food that's brought in from our farm. We started a volunteer, uh, program as well.
And thank you, sir, that's your time.
Okay, thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Michelle Young.
Good evening, Council. Um, I am a resident of the sixth ward, the homeowner of the sixth ward, so a taxman person on the sixth ward, and I'm coming here to speak to you on behalf of the Harper Fund. I just want to remind everybody what the overall objective of City Council is, is to serve the best interests of their constituents and work towards the betterment and development of the city as a whole. They should, um, do public engagement that fosters transparency, accountability, and public participation. They should represent and advocate for their members to ensure that their voices of the community are heard and addressed in local decision-making. They should be budgeting and financial management responsible, um, which ensures responsible financial management and allocate resources efficiently. And lastly, they should be policy makers. Create policies that benefit the community as a whole. So what I am asking, in your professional, you are, you guys have experience professionally as being council members representing the public, to also be professional problem solvers. Okay, pardon me, and a problem solver is knowing what the problems are. So just listening to the council meetings, I have brought down a couple of things that I'm asking you guys to team up as a team, two, two-person team, except for one team, it's going to have to be three of us. This is I. These are some of the things I ask that you work on and bring your contributions to this, you know, to the council meeting, so that they can be addressed privately, because I do think a lot of the times we are giving money to businesses, by the one seat, and we are forgetting the citizens.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Problem solver, Tanya Burns, problem solver Quincy Murphy, and problem solver Judy Priest. I am asking that you provide for struggling homeowners. Bring resolution to help with roofs, windows, water heaters, or, uh, paying water bills or giving tax credits so that we don't have what happened to these homeowners happen again. Put something in place to prevent people from losing their homes. Allow some of that arper money for that. The next team, Eva Worley, problem solver.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Next question, Madam Clerk?
Next speaker is Ashawn Bizzell.
Hello. Very nice to meet you, sir.
Hi, I'm here.
Hi. The city, uh, came in and had to fix my pipes because my pipers. My basement now has a foundation crack from a company that came in and bored through the wall. I've been fighting with the city for probably almost seven years, it might be seven years now to get the roof fixed. I just need my basement fixed so that I can live in my home without water pumping in my basement, without mold coming in my basement. I've been asking, asking, and asking. I just need my basement fixed, that's all I need. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is LaRosa Patrick.
Hello, everybody. My name is LaRosa Patrick. I am a certified family recovery coach, and I'm here, um, to, for the resolution for donations of love, and we guys, to this opioid, uh, money, for the donation of love. First of all, you guys, I want to tell you, uh, whether you all know it or not, this opioid crisis is real. It is real. It has touched many of families here in the city of Flint, and we really need to do something about it. Uh, I get caught all the time with people who have lost loved ones, uh, because of this crisis. People that, uh, individuals who did not even know that their loved ones was, uh, using opioids. Okay, and so this money will help us to go out into the community and teach people how to use this narcane. This medication right here can save a lot, okay? So many people have died that did not have to die if they had this medication right here. So with the training that, um, donations would love to, we show them how to use it hands-on, the new hands-on training. Because it's one thing to have this medication sitting somewhere and someone distributing it to you, but it's another thing to feel comfortable and know how to use it. So we put those medicines on the floor and we show people how to use it, because it's all about saving lives. And I listened to that video, that. And I listened to that video that Tanya Burns, Don Councilwoman Tanya Burns, that live video she did about that individual that was laying in the church doorway that had overdose, okay? And it touched my heart so bad, because I kept saying to myself, if only someone had had some Narcan, this could have saved his life. This little medication here could have saved his life, and so many others. And I'm gonna tell you a good story about a young baby that was a year old within the west part of Michigan. The baby got a hold to some drugs. It was the heroin. The grandmother was a heroin user, the baby got a hold to the drugs and overdose. The grandmother had this Narcan, but she did not know she could use it on the baby. And what she started to do was listen to her friends, and she gave the baby peanut butter, peanut butter, to try to save her life. And so what I'm telling you guys, please donate this money to donations of love so we can get out here and get this information out to the community and we can save people's lives. And I'm gonna tell you something, you cannot recover if a person is, has an addiction if they are no longer here. So please, please donate to get this money to donations of love. Thank you so much.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is Kenwood Robinson.
Good evening, all. I'm the CEO of donations of love. We have, we have 20 or more partners in cooperation that includes YNTA, Underland Intersection, and Greater Flint of the population. We have our early, greater of the transformation of earth. We have eight years experience. Our work of is donation of love, donation, targeting education of the entire family. We offer different programs to all ages, and our mission is to provide service to universal people in need, in need, in need, their well-being, and to call others to the vision of goodwill, through, through resources provided by the side. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. For the last minute, if you would, I'd like to give a shout out to everybody who is always in love, is doing, is helping, is helping us. The moment is already going down, but okay, that's, that's all I have to say. Next speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is Beverly Days Levy.
Hi, my name is Beverly Days Levy. I want to press counsel to the people, that they are listening to the voice. You guys are lying to the people about the trash cans. It's the biggest lie you ever told, and the wind was blowing so hard to say the trash cans. I got the trash can, and the wind was blowing it through that trash can hole. Quit lying to these people that that trash money is gonna make it through this city. It's not. We can afford our own trash cans. I got them for free, now y'all trying to turn, two meals? What about the roofs that used to be on people's, what about fixing their porch? You'd rather have these stupid trash cans than to have somebody to stay in their homes. Y'all need to make this step make sense. It don't. And when we came to Sevenfold campus, when we came over there Friday, I heard your, your rhetoric like, you are not in the Sevenfold. I think you, I, I, I do live, I can understand what you're saying. That's fine, Will, but you worked for Sheldon Neely when he was a rep, and he fired you. You left him hanging begging over the hair week, here and hired you. As soon as here lost the grades, you lost, you got, you got young. You called Dennis a shivering snake. You the king cobra of snakes, because you want to flip to fly whatever makes it look good to you. Y'all need to get this together. This city is falling apart, and all you worried about is the Arba fund money. 501(c)3 can more of this money than the people of the city of Flint. This is ridiculous. And you can look at me, you can turn your head, you can swivel your eyes, turn your neck. This is the stupidest stuff I've ever seen in my life, and I'm 65 years old. This is ridiculous that y'all allow this, and y'all don't vote on it. If you do, you don't care about the people of this city of Flint. We're gonna be paying for this in 2028, and you think that's worth it? No, we need a roof. We need some water taken care of. We need some homes with the light, with a water heater, furnaces. Get the boo-boo out of, out these folk cars. Y'all ain't thinking about that. All you thinking about is this Arba money. You argue over this like you argue over a bunch of little ass kids. Have a good day.
Next problem speaker, Madam Clerk. Next speaker is Chad Slosser.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Chad Slosser. I live at 2402 Nolan Drive, I think that's Mont Park neighborhood on West Franklin, where I serve as the president of our Neighborhood Association. I wrote and ran in partnership with support from the Neighborhood Engagement Hub for part of this Arba funding, and we really appreciate you all making this funding available to the community for projects that improve our city. During the pandemic, myself and my children started using our park a lot more because we're at home all the time. Another dad and I started a weekly game night for kids, where we would play kickball, tag, take them bird watching, play disc golf, do yoga in the park, or anything else that we could come up with. And this has grown from about 12 kids initially to as many as 60 kids this summer, every Tuesday night. And neighbors donate, this summer neighbors donated over $2,000, so we could provide pizza for the kids every single week. And so these are the kind of things that happen in Mont Park. It's a very popular park in the city, I think one of the most, one with the most high usage. This project that we're requesting funding for is very simple, it's to put in a pathway, a paved asphalt pathway that goes from the hill, like from one of the hills in the park, down to access all the amenities of the park, and then back up to the hill on the other side. Mont Park, the park itself, the playground area is in a hole, it's about 20 to 25 feet below street level, so it's hard to get to for anyone with a disability or in a wheelchair, as well as just a parent pushing a stroller or a child on a small bicycle. So this will provide better access for that, and this benefits all Flint residents and all people that use Mont Park. So I brought maps of this, I'd love to give this to you, Ms. Clerk, if you wouldn't mind passing those out to the council members, that's all I can say.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is. My name is Elby. Mr. CVC wants to speak now, it's John.
Good evening, Flint City Council community members. My name is John Lee, I'm a community developer at Asbury CVC, I'm a volunteer spokesperson for vital resources at Asbury CVC, providing storage, and maintenance and recovery. A sign before you today, to strong advocate for Asbury CVC to reconsider Asbury's upcoming remaining Arba funds, Asbury CVC has been a pillar of support for the city of Flint, particularly on East Side, which is one of the most prestigious areas in the city. I sell firsthand, through my career in American, National Service experience, how vital Asbury CVC is working with the Arba funds, and the community, and certainly understand that Asbury's capacity to reach and provide vital resources quantically and qualitatively. There are some reasons why Asbury CVC should be seriously considered for remaining Arba funds. Number one, community-driven markets. Asbury CVC has spearheaded barriers projects, barriers projects that directly guide to community, such as the Communication Community Center, which provides barrier-free access to new community farms, the Southern Garden, and the Gators community. Asbury has developed a community arts program to give a chance for community artists on East Side all around, gain support, and showcase their art in state-of-the-art multi-person event space, whatever term you call it. These projects, these projects are rising to the polls, they are responding to change or viewing development and revitalization. Number two, Engagement Hub, farmers' community community data program. Asbury is in the process of developing a community Engagement Hub for farmers all around, from locally, also in the state, this is pointing to something that's new across the nation. We're experiencing something that's, you know, that's, that can be national, possibly at a national scale, something that we can do. Number three, transforming the lives for youth programs. Asbury's youth programs have been instrumental in transforming lives of young people in Flint. We have seen the highest retention rates of having youth workers recurring over year and year. We provide educational support and leadership. And number four, we continue to increase the capacity of providing vital services for East Side Flint. So by considering these points, I think I urge my strong, the City Council and community members here to vote in favor of Asbury CVC's encouraging of the early Arba funds. Thank you.
Next person speaking, CVC.
Speaker, Asbury Dan Roy.
Good evening, council members. My name is Dan Roy, I'm here, I'm the general manager and food manager for the Golden Garden in downtown Flint, and kind of here on behalf of the hospitality industry, and thought possibly this matter would be addressed in this evening's agenda, but it's not, so I leave my public speaking time just to bring it up. We're the council intention to consider a change in the direction of the Sunday early sales of the period license. I know, you know, this is over 10 years ago when the council decided to opt out of that rule, so ultimately it's the council's decision to change direction on that, and one, and one to know that, you know, part of the revitalization of downtown Flint is part of the hotels and restaurants competing with outside areas as well. In the last three years, even on Saturday nights and Sundays and other Saturday nights and the week, we haven't seen any, we haven't had remarkably few issues with alcohol, but honestly, the city, which is great, and I think it's time to possibly look at this Sunday sales to change. We can still get the license, we can pay the license to the state, but it's up to the council to, to actually serve that product on Sundays before noon. You know, I have a lot of people working for us, working these brunch shifts, we're obviously depending on weddings and getting ready rooms for weddings, and after wedding brunches, and really fill up that hotel, and the sport and sauce, we're trying to brunch, we have served it where we're at, the, the lack of Sunday sales, but I'll, it's something to think about for all those people and for the city. You know, I can easily have a car drive down to, to Ramblin' or whatever, and get a moza, have a brunch party, but I think from the outside, that being in Flint, let's bring those people in the downtown, give them the ear, and have people see Flint for what it's coming into, and I think that's all I really want to say. And that hopefully, a future meeting, that'll be more of us in the meeting here to discuss what we have, that's all.
Good evening. My name is Mercedes Candy. The reason I'm coming to you today is because I had to find great, creative ways to raise money, and that was, I made the best cheesecake in the world, I managed to put it out there with a raffle ticket, so I did that. And in doing that, this is what the raffle ticket looks like, it's for a 378 cheesecake, gourmet cheesecake, and the raffle ticket is $50, and we're gonna have a joint at New Edges, so it's gonna be all in public, and everybody can see it, it'll be very transparent. In addition to that, if there's more money, and, and Ms. Candy told me there was a building that I had rent, because I had six people waiting to learn how to do culinary, this is for a 2007, make a town car, white, beautiful, no scratches, no nothing, nothing interior. It's a hundred dollar ticket. So when the banks, a long time ago, if you look at Wall Street Journal, you'll see me sending Wall Street Journal. When the banks say no, you can't, you don't have any money, it said, it become creative, and I became creative. If I have a talent, if you have a talent, learn how to use it, learn how to make money, and this is what I'm doing, with the help of God and all His blessings. I'm asking that my resolution pass with nine votes, and I thank you. And being a nonprofit, you see, if I ask one time and I don't get the money, don't worry, I'm gonna find another way to get some money. And I just want to thank you all in advance for passing that resolution for me, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is David Garvin.
Hi, this is David Garvin, and I'm just here today to thank the two councilmen for your, you had today, on today, whether they liked it or not, we're still educating on that. And I just wanted to say about that, Arba money, you guys gotta come together, you can't fight on the number like that up here all the time, you gotta come together, find out these people that have these applications out there, y'all automatically, you either get them together, find out what they need, get some prices going, you know, everybody's broke is different, and that's what I come to counsel on earlier today about that. Get some prices, go out there, you gotta go out there and get prices going, because if you do get the people the money, you got hungry folks out there that's gonna need them now. So you need to find out how much money you need. You asking for an extra buck, five mil, ten mil? Well, you don't know if you're gonna need it if you don't find out the people that, what they need done, the roofs, the bathrooms, kitchens, whatever, floors, windows, whatever. You need to get a price on that, find out what it is. I worked for the House of the Door in 42 years, and we got, we had to get out and get bids on this, in order to get it done. So you guys, that's what you guys need to do, get with the mayor, I know you don't like y'all, and y'all don't like him, but you, you got to start somewhere. He put the mouth out there, you gotta find out what is it gonna cost to get this done with. And, and that's the bottom line on everything, you, everybody's going out pricing and pricing, but who got it together? Nobody. So the mayor didn't find out how much it's gonna cost to put a broken one, you don't know, he just gave y'all the wrong money. Y'all saying it's not enough. Well, have y'all think y'all both working on it? I have, no. So you're just running in circles together, oh yeah, just running in circles. I just want you guys, just trying to get it together, you know, talk to one another. You know, you got half on the man's side, half on the lady's side, you know? But just get, just get it together, you know? Get it together, talk to them.
Don't you ride down there on Fleming Road and see that we got a new road put in? And somebody done knocked the hole in it and now it's been filled up with water. And if not, if you can't make it, then we'll call on the governor to come over here and see that the new road in Flint has been helped up and we need to get it fixed up. Thank you. Next speaker.
There shouldn't be no more speakers.
The last one, you got the drink for wine, man? Well, I'm coming to you once again on the seventh floor. And this is for the applicants who are supposed to employ people, the community to the infrastructure. Well, I don't even see it. I don't have much to do anymore. It's supposed to go to Metro and to Chicago. So I want to know about that, about those applications that Channel 12 is going to do. Come down here, put out the app, which we've done to your house on the third floor. This is for all of y'all. And now y'all just pushed us aside and we raced us off of here. And now we talking about parks, food. First you gotta have a house.
Right.
Yeah.
And like I said last time, the council and the community is supposed to work hand in hand, not my side, your side. Oh, this is what it is for everybody. Here's some. I think some people want bigger pieces of the park.
Mr. Priestley.
It's fair. It's fair. And being good. You know, I think it's doing good. Last time y'all came over was, you know, I think everybody would have to be the power player. Because who do you jump out? Like they come out and talk to you before you bang it on. So I'm gonna go look back to my seat and be good so I don't get brainy voting.
Right.
All right, next speaker. For us, we have ready, Ed Bennet.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Ed Bennet. I'm the board member from Catholic Charities. I serve as the chairman of the Tiny Home Project for veterans and on June. With me today is the director, Katie Baxter. And Katie is going after. You know, we have one of the highest populations of veterans right here in Davidson County. We have veterans, a number of veterans that are homeless, living in woods, living in cargo boxes, living with relatives, living in conditions that, you know, is appalling. And we have an opportunity to do something very special for them. And through Catholic Charities, over the last five years, we're looking at a modern Detroit cast community. We actually looked at Tiny Home Village. And we determined that that's something that we want to give the county to help our veterans. So we have developed, what we have developed will be Sacred Art. The former Sacred Art Church on Warren Saginaw, Stuart Saginaw. Where twenty-four homes will be built, tiny homes for veterans to live in. And Katie can address what that village will include. But I will tell you that from the work that we've done today and the veterans we've talked to and getting involved, it's a very special project because it's a home. The two models are over on Ruth Street. We get a chance. Those were built, one of those built by students at the Curve Center Institute. The next one's being built within one last place for it. But we're moving ahead to get those units ready. We need funds for the infrastructure or event center and for the building of the twenty-four units. The hope is when those are built, we can then expand and do more for veterans and others in the community. So I'm gonna step aside and let Katie introduce herself.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Madam Chair, my name is Katie Baxter, CEO of Catholic Charities. And I just want to say Catholic Charities has been a community for over eighty years, serving people in need, and that's what we'll continue to do. Being the housing assessment resource agency, we see homelessness every day and the needs are great. And we want to be a part of the solution of helping the community and helping veterans. The program is a transitional housing program. It's not just housing, but it's a variety of counseling and education, financial literacy, and a variety of services to help veterans get on their feet and to live independently. So thank you so much. And we ask for the support for this. And we believe this model can be duplicated for other populations, like individuals and groups of people, to help them be successful and live successfully in happy, productive lives. Thank you.
Public speaking is on flow. Now it's time for a council response. Any more questions for us? Ms. Murphy.
Thank you. I want to thank all the speakers, everyone. We have two minutes and it's not gonna be enough time to get on it. But because I am the sixth ward, I want to say I appreciate Chad Slosser and Maggie for coming out here. Mont Park is huge, our community. And people go to Mont Park and all over Flint. My daughter, who is thirty-three now, we used to take her to Mont Park, to play on the playground equipment. And she's thirty-three. So having the park and having it accessible to everyone, whether they're handicapped or not, you have to be handicapped. You can just be my agent. You can make it down that hill. And that is the truth. It lies in the building. The Mont Park Recreation Association does a fabulous job of making sure it meets the community needs and providing lines and services that were taken away from this community because of the emergency management. There is game night, there's hockey. You have people just sitting on the bench watching the birds. And the people don't realize, yes, that is in Flint. So I appreciate what Mont Park does. The ARPA funds, we talked about the ARPA type funds. We've got work to do on that. And we have to continuously do it. And I will do it in an open forum because we have to have or should have public input. I want to speak to the Tiny Homes. I love that project. I've seen Tiny Home Villages in L.A. and Detroit has one. And taking care of our veterans, because they did something that I haven't done. They have served our country. And many of them have come back and have to deal with certain issues. Homelessness should never be an issue of any veteran when they serve their country. Never, ever, ever. When that project, I know that is the councilwoman, Karen Swir, she has my support. And we all want to be a part of that. Because that's something that's healing to our country and our community as we see these wars that are happening now. Thank you.
All right. Madam Chair. Ms. Worthy.
Thank you. I did want to hear the rest of what you had to say, Miss Young, hopefully another time. So, or shoot me an email or something. I'll listen. And I just wanted to say that I do appreciate those who have come in support for the council working together. That was the point of Liddell and I's press conference, that work isn't getting done because some are choosing not to work together. And for me, I can be called neighbors, I can be yelled at, but I still want to get the work done. It doesn't matter. I just want to get the work done. So if that wasn't the takeaway from the press conference, I'm telling you now, that was supposed to be the takeaway, that we want to work together, we have to do a lot, we have to go through a lot, just to get work done. And it shouldn't be that way. Other councils in other cities, meetings are hour or two. They get the work done, they go home to their families, they get rest. And I'm excited to get the work done. I'm excited to pass more ARPA dollars. And so thank you to those who spoke and also for those who members just come together because that's what it's all about. We want to let the citizens have a reward. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ed Bennet. Councilwoman Shira.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you to everyone that spoke today. Definitely appreciate you showing up and being engaged and being involved and sharing your opinions. There was a gentleman who backed into bourbon. He was talking about some of your services that you offer. And I know we cut y'all off in a way, and I would love to catch up with you later to hear more about the services that you offer. Yes. So thank you for sharing. I also want to say, and just really quickly, because this will be the last time it gets addressed, I understand when we don't know people, when people are new, when we hear things about people from other people, that we tend to make comments. I want us all to be clear. I am not ashamed of any part of my work history, nor have I ever sought anyone out for a position, but I've been sought out for positions. I thank the former mayor, Dr. Carol Weaver, for allowing me the opportunity to be her public information officer position, which she sought me out. I thank the current mayor, Sheldon Nilly, for the opportunity to work with him in Lansing and be his constituent services person. More so importantly, I thank all the residents of Flint for the opportunity to serve them. I understand that sometimes we don't understand how this works. And because we're so jaded about politics, we don't understand when there's a person who has a heart of service for the community and is willing to work in capacities that will help uplift the community. I know who I am. I know why I've been taking positions that I've been offered. It's not flip-flopping. It's working for your community. It does not matter who the mayor is. Sheldon Nilly is the mayor today. I will work with him. If Dr. Carol Weaver was the mayor again tomorrow, I will work with her. The point is to work with people because we are all in this community. There's a division that keeps happening when you all hear those two names. I ask that community to stop it. That we all work together regardless of whomever you like. If I can work for both of those people, so can everyone else. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. May.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I looked at my clock. It is six twenty-four. Really, that's six-thirty. We've had a committee meeting scheduled all year long, five o'clock today. This Liddell Lewis and Eva Worden called a special council meeting, which we're in for a quarter to five. I've said it for ten years, and I've never seen a meeting stacked up on a meeting that's been posted for months. And the agenda is ARPA money. I enjoy talking to you, great period. We got to talk Maggie. I know people concerned about ARPA money. But ARPA money should be on finance committee. We should be in finance committee. I've seen two of my colleagues talk about chaos in a press conference. This is chaos at its best. When you got a council meeting for money, a committee meeting scheduled today at five is six twenty-four, and we, and a special meeting called by Liddell Lewis and Eva Worden tipping for what I've seen in ten years on this council. That's chaos. My position is this. All ARPA resolutions should come through committee. They should be vetted. But my position is help the majority of people. I want to help nonprofits. I want to help Mont Park. I want to help Ms. Jones and all of them folks. That night amounts to five million dollars. We got forty, fifty million dollars to allocate, and I will keep by for twenty million of it to go to the residents of the city of Flint in a category called home improvement.
Ms. Worthy, Karen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I just want to, I just want to say thank you to all of the residents for coming out. Thank you for those of you who spoke. Thank you for being engaged in the process. Thank you for coming to us with your, your comments, your concerns, your issues, your opinions. Thank you, Ms. Michelle, for your talk about us working together and being on teams to get things done. And I just want to say, we do get the work done. I know that there's a narrative out there that this council do not work. We spend hours working. Yeah, we do. At times, we may have disagreements, but that's not saying we're not getting the work done. We are getting the work done. Now, we do have all of these resolutions for our, and I agree with Councilwoman May. Why are we circumventing the process? All resolutions should come through committee first. A lot of the resolutions on this agenda did not come through committee. And we do, in our rules, we're supposed to be in finance committee right now as of five o'clock. And that's a rule, in our rule. I don't know why we're in this meeting, this special council meeting right now, that was called fifteen minutes before the five o'clock PM finance committee that's been scheduled. It's a scheduled meeting. So I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is that your time?
She made a motion.
Okay, what's your point?
You should be asking, is there a second to her motion?
Ms. May, the buzzer went off. Okay, so.
Madam Chair, she did finish before that buzzer had been tweeted. So it is in order to ask for a second. And we should be at the point where we should be asking, is there a second for that?
Not a problem. So in there, although the buzzer didn't go off, it is second. All right, supported by Mrs. Piper. So, low moment for? I abstain. Ms. Murphy.
No.
Ms. Dixley.
No.
Ms. Murphy, Karen.
Yes.
Ms. Byrne.
Yes.
Ms. Chat.
No.
Ms. Piper.
Yes.
Ms. Worthy.
No.
Ms. Ray.
Yes.
It's four yes, four no, one extension. Okay, so. I was just getting to the vote. It's four yes, four zero. That fails. So what failed? Was the appeal failed?
Did you know the rule?
Okay, well, here we go. So there's the motion for adjourn. Madam Chair. All right, so does anyone else want to speak?
Madam Chair.
Ms.
Will she still comment?
Yes, we were.
Sorry, I don't want to speak again.
Ed Bennet, it's okay. It's fine. So anyone else like to speak?
Yes. The Councilman, Ms. Murphy. I would like to thank all the speakers who spoke and to David that's in my ward now. I did put it in the referral when we spoke to the administration to see where we at with the contracts because we did approve funding for Habitat, I believe, and Metro and possibly G-Pod to help residents. Is it G-Pod? To help residents. So I want to know where they at on those contracts and when can the residents be able to apply for, to get them homes? Because it's been long enough and people are getting agitated when we come.
Point of interest to, oh, no. All right, is you?
No, so I didn't hear. What did you say?
Or request. Well, it's not technically. But I just wanted to say that Metro came out with the applications that you can apply for the home repair today. Just wanted to let you get the word out.
Okay, I appreciate you. Thank you.
And to my colleagues, councilwoman, I was kind of feeling some kind of way when you said that the Tiny Homes is in the fifth ward, even though the demo home is in the fifth ward on Ruth Street. The twenty-four homes will be in the third ward on Stewart and Saginaw. So don't, 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 don't get it popping up in here because, you know. But I'm excited about those Tiny Homes. I look forward to, hopefully we be able to move forward with you guys' three-point-five-year-long project. I've been working with you guys behind this thing with this project. I am overly excited. This will be one of the first houses to be built in the third ward in I don't know how many years. So I'm looking forward to seeing that landscape on the front of Stewart is at, all being changed into some tiny homes in this community center. I was just looking at it. And y'all want to have a small business room. Hopefully y'all be able to come sneak in there and, you know, lift some weights or something. So I'm looking forward to seeing this and I look forward to working with you guys.
Okay, anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley.
I want to apologize to the speakers. I always try to give you my attention, but I don't know, just before public speaking, that a good friend of mine, who was also my neighbor died. So I want to apologize to everyone because that just kind of blew the line. But for those that I did speak, we can't meet more than two at a time. Yep, I wanted to mention that.
It's just a odd note.
Yes, yeah, I know. I know. I wanted to let you know. Also, I'm trying to think because I didn't make good notes. Catholic Charities, I wanted you to build those houses on the old home park on April. However, I think that that has to remain undeveloped. But think about us. Maybe we could work with the land, do something, some type of date on the line. And that's all I can think of off the top of my head. Like I said, I want to apologize because I was distracted.
Anyone else want to speak? There's one. See, there's a council response. All right, seeing that there's no one else, I will lay in the last to speak. I mean, thank, I should thank you to everyone that came out. We know that this special meeting was called before committee meeting. But it was called before committee meeting because too many times we've been here and we have not been able to handle the business. We haven't been able to pass the monies that we were supposed to pass. If we wouldn't have adjourned the last meeting that we had early, we wouldn't be here. We wouldn't need this meeting. So unfortunately, we have to do what we have to do to make sure that we pass the money and get it into the nonprofit hands so they can distribute it to the city. We're trying to make this money to as many people as possible. And different nonprofits, they have different priorities. So we're trying to make sure that we are, that we get this out as fast as we can. And we can't do it if we don't have our colleagues in their seats. So tonight, we have our colleagues in our seats. We're looking forward to pass this money, load it up or down, and then be on to financing the rest of the committee meetings. We can do it. So let's go ahead and continue to hold us accountable. And again, thank you so much for coming. So with that being said, we are going to go on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to pass consent agenda with any separation?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
All right, there's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Support.
Supported by Mr. Murphy.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. May.
Yeah, I'm gonna ask that the resolutions be separated. Two-three-zero, three-nine-one opioid settlement funds. Two-three-zero, three-nine-two neighborhood engagement funds, ARPA funds. Two-three-zero, three-nine-three ARPA fund grants. As very pleased, Mrs. Bell's in center. Two-three-zero, three-nine-four ARPA funds. Increase moved access, area of downs, community outreach center. Two-three-zero, three-nine-five allocation of funds, opioid settlement funds. Two-three-zero, three-nine-nine ARPA funds, visit church. Two-three-zero, four-zero-zero ARPA funds. Catholic Charities, Sacred Arts Building Project. Two-three-zero, four-zero-one ARPA funds, car improvements. Two-three-zero, four-zero-two, a lease approval for eight thirteen Cloud Road. And two-three-zero, three-five, three-seven-five contract change order number one priority waste collection. And I would also add to resolutions, Madam Chair, if you expect to write a copy of it, they will be the suspension of Quincy Murphy and Liddell Lewis. And I would do them separately. Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. May, would you like to make an addition to the agenda?
Separate resolutions on the agenda and add it to.
Okay, so, so would I have an addition to this agenda because the agenda is already set, Ms. May?
Madam Chair, the, I could do it in the form of a motion. And I'll do it later on. A motion will be in order. I know you don't want to suspend that when you and Quincy Murphy are taking the gifts on the agenda, but I'll do it by motion. That's the gifts you have to the management of the capital.
All right, thank you, Ms. May. So since Mr. May separated every single resolution, we do not have a consent agenda to pass. So we will go ahead and look forward.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthy.
I know, Resolution two-three-zero, three-nine-one, allocation opioid settlement funds, donations to the blood foundation.
All right, it has been moved for approval.
For the board of representatives.
What was your point?
I mean, normally whoever separates, we have a bracket. So that's who you asked for a motion first. But since you and Eva Worden are rolling together, I can see you missing that. And I will just do it from there.
Okay, so Ms. Worthy, she called the floor.
She do a lot better than me, right?
So, of course, so Ms. May, I do apologize. Nothing's done intentionally, but, yeah, but Ms. Worthy had to put the floor. She got the floor. She made a motion.
Let's move forward.
Great idea. So, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Michelle.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. May.
Yeah, I wanted to get the floor up. So you wouldn't do this intentionally or unintentionally. You and Ms. Worthy, you do a lot intentionally or unintentionally. This particular resolution that I separated is the allocation of opioid funds. And I want this to go back to committee, but I'm not going to initially make that motion to maybe even second round and discuss it. I don't care if I may get to you that on the twelve o'clock at night. I'm gonna do a thorough vetting and communication on each of these resolutions. These resolutions should go through finance committee. They should be vetted. We should be talking to the legal department and finance to see what these funds can be spent for. And we should do it as a group. We shouldn't do it with you being called down to the mayor's office and then calling a special meeting on top of a meeting. It's appalling. And I know you say you didn't do it intentionally, but one of the last persons I'd have a press conference with unintentionally would be Worthy. I looked at the press conference. One of the news people asked about me. And Ms. Worthy had said something about me saying something about. And Ms. Worthy had said something about me saying something about barely applying for City Hall or whatever. And what's relevant about that, she left out what she said. She called him narcissistic, they don't. She left that part out. In a press conference. Just crazy. It reminded me of her and Kate Fields called in the press conference and you was taking Kate Fields place.
What's your point?
My colleague in the first one is not um germane to the um subject matter, which is the resolution to two, three, zero, three, nine, one allocation of opioid settlement funds donation for Love Foundation.
You want to promote this, Ms. May?
I say I am germane. And if you want to continue to say, to say I'm not germane because people have talked about working together. People have talked about whether or not we call and take care of this business in a special meeting that you and Eva Worthy called. You even talked about it when you said if we don't do it, it can't get done. So procedurally, when her and Eva called a meeting, Mr. Murphy, and I criticized him for calling that meeting in a press conference. Maybe you didn't see the press conference, Mr. uh Murphy, but they did. Both of us know a hundred percent what was said and then they asked, Mr. Ms. Ladel Lewis, do you try to talk to May? He said, I don't, and she said, he don't get right elevated with. Why would I right elevate it with?
What's your point?
My point is, my colleague is talking about press conference yesterday and we are on resolutions to get the business done with the city plan. This resolution is two, three, zero, three, nine, one allocation of opioid settlement funds donation for Love Foundation. And I'm not tr- I'm not hearing you how a press conference yesterday or today that my colleagues done has anything to do with this resolution. We want to get the business done and that's a no, not a subject matter. Well, right now, we on resolutions to, we have on to, yeah, a lot of resolutions to get through. And we want to try to get through, that's all I'm saying.
Point, point, well taken, so Ms. May, um please, um let's stay on topic where you mentioned.
Let me say this if I may, Madam Chair, I took counsel to the public. Everybody gonna get two rounds of five minutes on this motion. And this motion and this resolution shouldn't even be here until we get to Monday's council meeting. This was a special council meeting called by Ladel Lewis and Eva Worthy and they talked about it in the press conference. If Mr. Murphy can't see the relevance of me talking about bringing this today, which I'm not gonna support today versus council meeting Monday, then we got some people who don't understand the term germane. Don't understand the logic of me and my vote. Factor in a meeting that was called today by two people and one of them just made a motion and the other one apologized because it was really supposed to be me making the motion first. So it's relevant, but Mr. Murphy don't think it's relevant. And because it's a criticism of this Worthy and Ms. Ladel Lewis called in a meeting. Gee, I agree, Mr. May, can you stay relevant? Oh, it's relevant, you called a meeting, you got it before me. I'm not gonna vote for it, Mr. Murphy, I don't vote for it. But until I talk to legal and finance, I'm not putting a vote on this opioid settlement money that me and Ladel Weaver then put in place. Neither Ladel Lewis, Quincy Murphy, wasn't nobody in here when we brought their lawyers in under the Weaver administration for this opioid settlement. And Mr. Sack, you can sit your head like you back to that, but timing and vote on a regular meeting and a special meeting is relevant. I just happened to see you when Quincy was talking, saying, yeah, 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 yeah. Y'all say what y'all want to say and decide what is relevant, that's all germane means. Germane means relevant.
Alright, thank you, Mr. May. Anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Ms. May.
Thank you, um just wanted to correct something, I was very much here with opioid settlement was happening, very much here when it was won. Also, um I want you.
Requesting information, Madam Chair.
And explaining to us about.
Okay, so. So would we have a request for information? Go ahead, Ms. May.
Mr. Sack, not to be rude, you don't have to, but even without the mask on, I don't even know what you'd be saying. If you could speak clearly, slowly, uh maybe I can understand what you're saying, but I sure can't understand.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Ms. Michelle, um somebody could add, Ms. May, next to now, is that proper?
Yeah, you're right.
Go ahead, Mr. Ms. Michelle.
Thank you, and you hear me clearly. So as I was saying, I want to thank Ms. Rosa Patrick for coming up here and talking to us about this donation for the Love Foundation. She also said, so every time she's had an opportunity to come up and speak, she's trained us a little bit more about the Narcan and why that's important. So this evening, when she spoke about the fact that it can be used on babies, I did not know that. I'm sure there are others who did not know that. And so what part of, what this money can go for is to help train us on facts like that. Because unfortunately, whether we like it or not, there are children who will be exposed to different unsafe environments. And so that training will need to be put in order, in order to save their lives. Uh when she's came and she spoke last week, something she said that was very important, very vital was the fact that while you may have that Narcan um and you use it, you have about sixty minutes to get to a hospital before it, it's possible that you start overdosing the can. Um we keep talking about the opioid settlement money, we keep talking about how important uh addressing the opioid addictions in our community is, but we cannot keep prolonging actually addressing these things. We can't keep having people come up here during meetings who are telling us, and she's training us bit by bit, I don't know if we're noticing that. But there's a way that all of this training can happen, more so than it being parceled out in just a few minutes that she has to speak with us. And so I would hope that we are able, ready and able to move on this, so that this training can go out to the community as it needs to go out. Um we, we keep saying, you know, we're concerned about this and this has to be addressed, this is our opportunity to address it, we don't need to keep prolonging it, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Michelle. Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Who's one for the guy?
Um Madam Chair, um bring you to um Clyde.
I can't believe you did that.
Mr. Edwards.
No, you said that too.
Or whoever know, whoever knows about the um opioid settlement funds.
We losing the seat.
Mr. Edwards. Who do you have in charge of that? Ms. Sparks, thank you. Um. Do we have a um settlement fund plan?
Yes, we do.
Did that get submitted to the council?
Um I'm not sure yet that it did, but the Public Health Department put it together and it will be, it will happen already.
Okay, so, so with that, um I will not be voting to send, well, I, I want to be honest tonight because I want to see the plan.
Yeah.
I know we asked for the plan. Um and I see like two resolutions, maybe three resolutions um on this agenda that deals with the um the opioid four home funds. So um where will we have that in our end?
I will, I'll have to check with our faith in Public Health Department.
Okay.
And I'll get, I'll get it to you, okay?
Okay, great, you right. So um and that's, that's it, Ms. Ms. Sparks. Um. Yeah, I, I, I will not be voting on this tonight. Um I think that this should, this should go back to committee and not committee for tonight, but the next uh round, um the next committee meeting for finance. Because I want to see the plan. We gotta have a plan of how we're gonna use this money. I don't agree with using some of this money for that um North Side um Water Service Center. I'm not in agreement with that. I do like what the um donations with Love Foundation is trying to do as well as um inside. So I will wait for the uh plan and then I will uh decide um my vote. Thank you.
Anyone else in the first round?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Worthy.
Thank you, um and this is where, and I want to be consistent on this, this opioid money, we need to have a plan. So we should not be getting information bit by bit and be ready to vote on something that's incomplete. There is no plan. Zero plan. Now, the problem way would be submit it to council, let council review it. Then submit what amount of funds and what organization we would like it to go to. That's the way to do it. We don't see anything for prevention, intervention, recovery, or treatment. But we're ready to just give out money bit by bit, piecemeal. That's not the way to do it. Again, these funds came because people dying every day and fled because of opioid crisis. And this council don't want to do a word. That shouldn't be happening. And opioid crisis and drug overdose affects every race, every gender. So if they want us to do better, we need the administration to work with us to do better, too. Send us the plan. Let us read it, let's work together to make it work. Don't piecemeal it, don't send it to us bit by bit, that's insulting to do that.
So thank you.
Your clock was stuck.
Sorry, you were.
Yeah, she never did it.
It's not just talking for five minutes.
Right.
She says she must see, she got, she ready to talk.
She never started the clock.
I'm gonna get to it in three minutes, okay?
Thank you, I'm gonna wrap it up. I want us to do to the council to do this right, to work with every single ward and bus stops, if it's high in bus stops. Kids are in school and these kids are getting into those bus stops and seeing those, you know, needles in there. And people have died, I have death on Beach Row, a fourth street in a bus stop, right before church. Had someone on bound at Bethel Church, dead on the steps of the church. Then a block away, his girlfriend was dead. Less than an hour, another person by Cheers Store, dead overdosing. That's three people one day, less than three hours. And we owe this opioid money because people are dying from this and are dying to make sure we have a plan. So Michelle Sparks don't have to walk back up. If we can get that, I'm supporting this going back to committee so we can have the same information. Not piecemealing it, not bit by bit, giving it to the community because we need to do this right. This is not doing it right. You look on your phones now or Google on social media, keeping the community informed. You're not gonna go down more than probably two or three times where you seen someone passed out, overdosing, slumped over at the wheel, person found unconscious. Don't take my word for it, look on social media and see it, you see it all day long. So we owe it to get this done right. And when we get it done, you don't have to come back up, I didn't, I'm in a loss of my voice. Yeah.
Are you guys looking for like a contract, like what, what can we use funds for or the plan for the city?
What is the plan? Yes.
Which one?
A plan. A plan, a plan for the city.
Because it's contract, we don't have that when you would leave it for.
Right, so we gonna focus doing with this. I, I appreciate um Ms. Rosa Patrick saying each time that she sits back there, what she wants to do, education, prevention, intervention, treatment. But we need to say, we're gonna give her organization this, and this is what they're getting this, we need to give this other organization this. Um and we need to have, what is the plan? Because how much is it, eight point six million? And then we're gonna have a second deposit, not much? It's coming soon, yeah. Yeah, we got other deposits of this money coming. So the money's coming and we don't have a plan. That doesn't make sense. We gotta have a plan. And this should be done in committee, Councilor May is correct. This should be done in committee. This is committee work, this should not be coming to us like this. I'm not past, I hope my colleagues would say, we owe everyone to do it right and do it in committee. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for clearing, thank you.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Priestley.
Yes, um I agree that this should be going through me and that we need the plan. This is what happened with the art of funds, is that we were spending money without even knowing what the administration's plan was. And the council didn't even get the opportunity to approve the art of plan. So I'm gonna make a motion to send this to the committee meeting on um the twenties.
Twenty.
Or the twenty second. Oh, the twenty first. So I make a motion to send this to finance on the door first.
Madam Chair.
Motion to submit to finance, and we went around. And it was supported by who?
Madam Chair.
Ms. May, we told, so, um.
That's how you get a second, you recognize somebody and they say, I second it, you don't say, oh.
Ms. May, they already had a second.
Madam Chair, you have to be recognized to make a second.
Excuse me, just making sure I'm clear, so Ms. Priestley, make the motion, Ms. Worthy seconded, correct?
You have to make your point of order and I'm gonna move on. Just so you know, you have to repeat the motion and ask for a second. If you don't do it, then you can move on, but that's really how it goes.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. May.
I'll be voting to move this quickly to finance committee meeting so we can get out of this meeting. You warned me already in this meeting that just tired people saying, I couldn't hear Candace Missack. I tried to say to you when you got people hollering out, a motion has been made, you repeat the motion. You repeat the motion and then you ask for a second when you recognize somebody. That's where the record people can know who made the second. I'm just trying to teach you how to chair, you want to be a chair. You want to be a so bad, but you're rude toward me for one. How you gonna work together and you gonna be rude toward your senior councilperson? How you gonna be a chair and I'm trying to help you and you nasty to me? Is it embarrassing you that somebody with deep voice can help you? It should be and it's happening meeting after meeting after meeting. So I hope we bribe these fans, get out of this ill-called meeting. Put these resolutions where they need to go so we can take care of the business of the city. You like chairing? Ms. Priestley should be chairing. We should be in finance committee meetings, not on this agenda that couldn't come through finance and couldn't wait till Monday. In ten years, I've never seen leadership or nobody schedule a special meeting fifteen minutes before committee meeting when you got a monthly meeting coming up. That just seem like you like chairing. And Eva Worthy like to be popular with you. Ain't no resolution I will talk about, Mr. Murphy, where the timing of it on this agenda and who called a meeting ain't gonna be relevant to me. It might not be relevant to you, but it's relevant to me and my vote. And I represent eight thousand people just like you and us. And one of them, two of them here. I see another one here. And I'm sure they would disagree with y'all when y'all tell their councilperson that the timing of passage of offer money ain't relevant, that who called it what meeting. Like I told you, Maggie, until they put that twenty million on their agenda that deals with the home improvement category and them seven hundred residents who put in paperwork. When they say no justice, no peace. when they say no justice, no peace, no justice, no peace. I don't have to believe what's relevant for you, Mr. Murphy. I believe what's relevant for me and the people I represent. It and timing on spending forty fifty million dollars is relevant.
I will. This one, Ms. Murphy?
Yes, um I, I agree with um my colleague in the first floor that I didn't understand how we um wanted to call a special meeting during at four forty-five when we got the final meeting at five. So I do agree with that, but we here. The special meeting is going on. Five of us voted to move the meeting forward. So being said that, we here with these resolutions, so whether I like it or not, it's called and I'm here to take care of the business of the city event. And I do believe my subject matter should be based on the resolution and not based on a press conference that my colleagues gave yesterday or resident um called a special meeting at four forty-five. In the charter, it says they have a right to do that. That's what they did. That's what happened. I may not like it, but it happened. So I'm here, so I'm willing to focus on the resolution as I was wanting five who voted to move this meeting forward when some of my colleagues just made a motion to adjourn the meeting. I was one that voted against it. So I'm willing to stay here and get these resolutions done and focus on the topic. And maybe my philosophy of um resolutions and what's relevant ain't the same as yours. Thank you very much for that. Um I would um support moving this back to finance, and the reason why I believe that um we might still respect the finance because I'm not against the fifty thousand for um the group that's um asking the donation with Love Foundation to train people. But when you want to train people from the historic background that I came from in the hood, when you go and um people were doing drugs, you didn't really go and be like, okay, y'all need to get some help. When they used to go into the houses and bust drug houses and all of that different kind of stuff. So if you do training, that's one thing, but if you ain't get who um pushing the opium out in the streets, you could do all the training you want to, but you ain't dealing with the real cause of the problem. So I would like to see fifty thousand to go towards enforcement, far as enforcing these pharmaceutical companies or at least houses in the hood or wherever they are. I don't know how people is getting in the street, is getting in the streets somehow. So if I spend fifty thousand just training, that's not no help. It's being pushed into the streets. So you gonna try and argue want to, but at the end of the day, it's still being pushed in the streets by somebody. So you need to be going to the real cause of the problem and figure out who, what doctors or whoever is putting in the streets. Cause somebody put in the streets.
Ms. Murphy?
Good point.
I will be supporting sending it back to finance while we can discuss this properly. And I will ask, I don't know who's here from this organization, but uh I would like to see some kind of documentation stating your qualifications to provide this training. I've looked up the organization and so far I can only find a Facebook page and there's nothing about opioid, there's nothing about opioids. Uh there's nothing about um Narcan. There's nothing about this, so I hope that you can provide some um
Clear.
clarity on how you're uh qualified to train people to use Narcan. And along with that, I would also like to know um what is your partnership with second ward councilwoman, Liddell Lewis, that you want to um present in your proposal? I'd like to know that. I think there's a conflict there, so hopefully we can finance committee, we can, we can brush it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
She all up around getting money. Damn. He gave it back to you. He gave it back to you.
Anyone else want to speak in the first round?
Bet she won't dream about me no more.
All right, that's fine. So seeing that we um wouldn't happen now, I'll go any of the last to speak. Um I'm not forcing this back. First partnership with Liddell Lewis, I have no clue which you're referring to. She is the second ward resident, and I work with all residents on all things. So.
Request for information.
Yeah.
Are you aware that your name is under established partnerships and then on the resolution?
Under established partnership with, with, with this ward in the past.
Second ward, lead councilwoman, Liddell Lewis.
Again, I work with all residents. I'm not working with her on her specific on, on this right here. So let's not carry a false narrative. But as we move on, see, this is where people get in front of results. While people wanna focus on me, we need to focus on the young people that are dying in the street because of opioids. We need to focus on the fact that, thank you so much, Ms. Burns, for sharing, I mean, how many people died in one day. What a day. What a day. All those people died in one day.
Deflected.
This is real. So if we wanna send it back to the end of November, how many people come losing the answer? How many people are we willing to sacrifice because we want to send it back for something that we know that we need right now? Sending it back is just saying people can wait for the help that they need. That can be the difference of life and death between the people that reside in the north and the west. So I'm not willing to risk it all. Why wait when we know that we need to pass it? I dropped off some resolutions at a funeral home. I dropped it off with one person. And then when I got there, I found out that two more people died from overdoses. We don't have time to wait. The man on the church death couldn't wait. His girlfriend that was shortly found thereafter couldn't wait. The lady that was found in the middle of my street couldn't wait. I don't wanna wait. It's time to do what we need to do for the people to save a life. And it costs us nothing besides a death vote. So with that being said, we're going, we're looking to.
Is that the first round or?
It's only one round in the um.
Okay, can I speak in the first round?
It's over.
Can I speak in the first round?
In the first round. Um so no, it is closed. On the last one, it was closed. All right, so right now, we're about to go ahead and go into the vote. And it's just to send resolution two three zero three nine one back to finance. Who?
Ms. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Prisley?
Yes.
Yes. Burns?
Yes.
Chad?
No.
Mr. Fifer?
Yes.
Ms. Worthy?
No.
Ms. Mays?
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Notice five, yes, four, no?
Notice five, yes, four, no. Resolution two three zero three nine one has been sent back to, has been sent to finance. Okay, he's been on to two three zero three nine two. The Aqua Fund for Mark Park.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Prisley?
Make a motion to approve two three zero three nine two.
All right, your little motion for approval, there's second.
Madam Chair, second, ma'am.
Second by Ms. Burns. Any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. Mays?
Through you to Maggie and your approach. Yeah, Maggie, this is the one that you gave for city council on.
Yes.
For fifty thousand dollars? And what do the Mark Park or, now, yeah, Mark Park Neighborhood Engagement of the Beautiful District, Mark Park Neighborhood Association, what are they planning to do with that fifty thousand?
We plan on putting a asphalt path, I believe.
Say that again. You gotta speak closer to the.
A asphalt path leading into the park. I believe Chad brought maps to the buildings. You should have a copy of those.
So, many asphalt?
Yes.
Could that allow, but nobody plays?
I'm sorry, what?
I see some star, nobody plays.
Yes.
This is what you wanna do? And you know how many people that is?
I do not know exactly.
Okay, but that's what the fifty thousand would go for that?
Yes, it would. It would allow residents with disabilities, mothers, fathers with strollers, people with more access to the park.
Um and you with the Mark Park Association?
Yes, I am.
And what position do you hold?
I'm on board.
You're on the board?
Yes.
Let me ask you this question about Mark Park. Did that apply? That's it. Um Maggie, having you in the Mark Park Board and Association discussed the Aqua Funds more than just the asphalt pathway, or is that the only thing y'all discussed?
That is what they discussed.
That's all y'all discussed?
Yes.
Maggie, are you familiar with the categories of home improvements?
I am not.
Okay, I wanna hip you today.
Okay.
And I wanna hip the Mark Park Association to a category called home improvements. I've got three main categories that I'm thinking of. Home improvements, small business, and the lost revenue.
Okay.
If Mark Park is gonna be an association, I wonder if in Mark Park, do anybody need a roof on their house?
Um, I am not aware.
I wonder if in Mark Park, do anybody need vinyl siding or windows?
Oh, I'm sure.
And I wonder if Mark Park, do they need any bathroom or kitchen remodel?
Maybe all.
So those are the categories that I'm concerned about.
Okay.
And I put a motion on the floor to increase that category of money from five million to twenty million. So not only could it help people in Mark Park, but in my area of Pearson and Cloud Road, the east side, the north side, and the west side. Did you know that?
I did not know that.
When I talked to you privately, somebody told you I said I didn't care if the money went back, correct?
That is correct.
I ain't told nobody that. That was another false rumor on Eric's head. I'm fighting not to let the money go back.
Okay.
Maggie, is you in Mark Park or anybody in Mark Park filled out an issue request form in council office for any of this money, do you know?
Yes, I believe there was.
And y'all ain't talked about it. I really wish Mark Park and the residents of the city of Flint would get behind me and maybe two or three more on this council and help push the expanded home improvements.
I agree.
Small business and revenue.
Which I'll have safety to live.
Yeah, so that's my position. I don't mind voting to give fifty thousand to Mark Park. I don't mind voting to give a million to Dr. Mona Tisha Hannah and others. Some of it don't amount to no more than ten million, but we had ninety four million. My biggest pushes for twenty million for residents to do home improvements all across the city. Do you think I'm a bad guy for that?
Not for that.
Do you think that it should be hard to get five council people to agree to that?
Um, do I think it should be difficult? No.
It should be. So, so Maggie, let's see what I do here. Because I said, until we can get the push for that home improvement, I wanna vote on everything at the same time. Let's see what that.
Thank you, Mr. Mays. Mr. Murphy?
Thank you so much. Um through you to the city administrator or um anyone who would speak on the thirty million dollars of the state park funding. Cause here's what I'm thinking. We designated a particular area from Hamilton Street, one all the way back south west to um, I think, I, I'm not sure if it includes Mark Park area. But the governor designated a particular area in the city of Flint as a state park and they earmarked thirty million dollars and, is it twenty million or thirty million? Twenty million? If someone can come and speak on that, what is the capital to improvement plan for the twenty six million dollars? Cause what I'm thinking, could they have tapped into the capital to improvement plan for the state park to include the um the um asphalt that you're trying to do? Because what I know happened, I'm not sure if you guys familiar with thinking, um McKay, I believe her name is. She tried to apply for funding for Ophelia Bonner Park to do a pavilion. But because we earmarked Aqua Funds for Parks and Recreation and I remember when they taught us, when I was trying to meet with Nancy and um the different people in the Parks and Recreation to see what was the park and recreation plan for the Aqua Funding. Some people like Athena that did not apply for Parks and um Recreation and tried to apply for Aqua Funds for Parks and Recreation was told that she couldn't apply for Parks and Recreation Park Improvement because it was going through the allocation of Parks and Recreation Fund. So when I see that you guys are able to give fifty thousand to Mark Park, it almost made me feel like, okay, well, why couldn't Athena apply for funding for Ophelia Bonner Park? Cause now you guys are telling us that we can't apply, they can't even be considered for apply for three million or however much money that we applied for Parks and Recreation and she couldn't apply. I'm not against giving them fifty thousand dollars. What I'm against is y'all being selective far as who y'all telling they can apply for funding for parks and then yet still she don't get no, uh, being able to even apply to qualify. And still she gets the money for Ophelia Bonner Park for a pavilion, let um the lake be rising. Park who worked so hard to help try to sustain Ophelia Bonner Park who done a lot of great. Those people who, um, and those who, those are the people who we um here today because they have paved the way in Ophelia Bonner Park, Ophelia Bonner who done great things. So when I look at this and I look at this work that Athena did in Ophelia Bonner Park, it's not that I'm against the fifty thousand for Mark Park, but what I'm against is how you gonna tell her she can't apply for some funding for Ophelia Bonner Park, but yet still we finna give fifty thousand to Mark Park when we already got money everywhere and they also got millions of dollars designated as the park. I have a problem with that process. So I'm not sure, I wanna support this, not that I don't support what's going on in Mark Park, but I don't support that this young lady tried to apply for some money for Ophelia Bonner Park and she couldn't get it. That's a big problem again.
All right, anyone else in the first round?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Ms. Karina?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Ooh, um, to your point, Councilwoman Murphy, so wouldn't you, wouldn't you say that essentially we probably should have had a meal, an, an, an opera, an opera meal that looked, looked at all of the resolutions that's coming before us? And we should have sat as a council and talked about each. And we should have sat as a council and talked about each resolution? And then talked about how we can also give other, other organizations who apply for funding to, you know, give them some money too, like, like you're talking about the community. See, this is the problem. I'm sorry. The process, this process was not, um, it wasn't that right. Yes, it is. And, and, and I wanna give everybody some money. We have enough money that everybody can get decent money. Nobody should feel left out. We have enough money that we can put twenty, twenty billion dollars into the park for home improvement. Because we should have taken care of the residents first.